Oh yeah, because I bet. So I took the backstreets because the officer saw they'd given it to them. That's what you say.
Yeah, he changed everything.
Did you get your shopping done?
Yeah.
Did you walk or tour?
The tours.
Did you?
The tours of the waters.
What?
At a conference in Vancouver. He might just screw up his airline.
But they will.
His son has a car. His son.
Is that the oldest one?
No, the second youngest. The oldest one is his grandma. Everything is perfect and everything's a lot.
Now, is he the one who wants to be an officer?
Yes.
Okay.
His mom said he drives like that. He thinks he's always a cop. So anyway, he has no car because for two accidents. They weren't dangerous. Anyway, so he picks a car up. So I'll fix that my son's van. Backing out.
Oh, are you serious?
Yeah, bust out the rear taillights. Now you can't step up there because it's across the border into the broken house. So anyway, I had. I loaded my car and on the way back I got this one.
Hold your base day on.
Okay. Uh, genetics, previous, pre-quit, previous position. First guy's down. Second boy's down. That's first thing that's coming.
No, I said.
Was that yours? Is that in my office? No, I had that one in my office a long time. Okay, I'll get back to you. I don't want. Thank you. I don't know much.
Yeah. That is good aside.
I have to extend it. That's usually not an option. I don't know how I got it.
You know, sometimes, sometimes it's best. I tried everything. Jim does.
Yeah, I don't.
Did you tell him?
More there from radar. I get one. Oh, I can see it. I'm not sure. Yeah. I'm not sure. Okay, back to you. Bill, your shirts issue.
No.
Turn over here, Dan.
Danny. Hello.
We've got a grandson clock on the wall there.
Yeah.
See right there?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
It's just a night grandfather clock. It sounds really cool, doesn't it?
How do you say it? Cook's clocking out is relevant to the government of the town.
Well, she swims out of Alice. She's been all right. She don't take me the while. She's got not a way to her. Beautiful home. And they had a, which was worth. That just paid off.
That's all the orders of Gold Bar meeting on March first. Like a sixteen, who stands the flag to? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The record show that all council members are present tonight. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as it stands?
I'll make said motion.
All in favor? And opposed? Agenda is approved. Go ahead, Mike. We're still waiting on stuff, so I prefer to have it confirmed. So go on to chief.
So I put out a fairly robust report for people. We talked about most of this last month. The gentleman that we arrested after our search warrant that was served in town, he is still in custody. Several more charges have been added since that search warrant was served, since he was originally arrested. And then even more have been referred to the prosecutor. So they, and then we consulted with them and asked them to make this a priority. And it showed that the, just within just the first several days, expecting to see more of what we've been seeing, it just didn't happen insofar as some of the property crimes in town. So as before, with the same individual, we're noticing a pretty big dip in the amount of property crime in Gold Bar just by putting that one person someplace where he can't do it. So hopefully that works out pretty good. Our post office burglars, Snohomish added a bunch of charges on him when we caught him. So he's still in custody. The, all the nuisance cleanup property stuff, that's been a good thing as well. It comes with good and bad. I mean, sometimes there's an advantage to knowing where people are and you dislodge them from where they're squatting. They find a new place to be. And one of the things I mentioned in my bulletin here was the identification of a new problem rental property here in town. We were there a bit even just yesterday due to an incident that took place elsewhere, but the vehicle involved showed up back at that house. And one thing I didn't know was that a lot of these people that we displaced from one particular property are now showing up at this place here in town. They're not living there, so that's good. But they are showing up here in town a little bit. So we just keep after them. They're not showing up in town anymore than they were. You know, now we know one particular spot they want to go to. Advantage here is we've had some luck working with that landlord in the past, and so we'll be working on it from now on the best we can just to try to close down that opportunity as quick as possible. So, and that's really, that's where we're at now. Deputy Sant just came to the Gold Bar region. He was our newest addition here right at the first of the year. And, but he was also fairly new to the sheriff's office, and he and his wife and family just had difficulty assimilating to the wet northwest kind of weather when they came from Florida. And so we were just given notice, and I just got a call from the agency that's hiring him today that he's heading back to the southeast again. And so we're going to miss him. We're going to be testing again for Gold Bar. It was unfortunate. He really liked it here and really enjoyed working around the region and town here. But he just couldn't make it work for the family. Really just came down to his wife finding the saying, "I dated here, forgot." And so, so they're heading back to where they were. And we'll get somebody else, we'll get a quality guy in place out here. The young man that filled in for deputy Griner out here is a very new deputy, but really sharp. So both Rick and I are kind of putting the bug into his ear. You know, we'd really like to have somebody in there. We'll see how that goes. I don't know if he's going to lock himself into something like this. He's young and eager and hard charging. He probably wants to be down south where they, you know, handle as many calls in a day as we have a week here. So we'll see what happens. That's it.
Yeah, the city's moving forward looking for grants and loans for water system improvements. Last year, we applied for a grant with Snohomish County Office of Housing and Community Development, CDBG grant. We, appears we were successful in obtaining a hundred thousand dollar grant. The technical advisory committee is recommending to the advisory board, which meets next on the third, to approve a hundred thousand dollars toward water systems improvements. Out of a total score possible of eleven hundred and seventy, we scored one thousand fifty-three. We threw it on the list. I met with Dardo O'Connor with USDA, and she's out of Mount Vernon office. She was here every six years. They come and they meet with the city, meet with staff, see what's going on, review some records, make sure everything's up and up as far as gold loans and that sort of stuff. So she's agreed next council meeting, to attend the next council meeting and make a presentation on the types of funding available to the Gold Bar region and other places for water system improvements. So that should be in less than this council meeting.
Thank you. Lisa?
I have nothing missing on the agenda.
I do want to add one thing that Lisa is, this year USDA was filed early, and we got kudos for that.
Thank you, Lisa.
Brian?
Thank you. And thank you.
I've got that you remind us of the date if we're not done.
Yes, I need to be excused about eight o'clock.
Nothing right now. Larry?
Nothing new except John and the chief over there and commend you for achieving what you've achieved here lately.
Any cities, citizen comments at this time?
I do.
Things that are not on the agenda?
I do.
Okay.
Well, since it hasn't been brought up, actually, one is actually more of a point of order. But RCW thirty-five A one-two, one-two zero. Basically, it's council forum rules and voting, paragraph two. Basically, the passage of any ordinance, grant, or revocation of franchise or license, and any resolution for the payment of money shall require affirmative vote of at least a majority of the whole membership of the council. Fifteen-eleven was voted on by four council members. The council was not present. I do believe that you might want to check into that.
What was that number again, Steve?
RCW thirty-five A one-two, one-two zero. If you'd like to have a copy.
I believe that says a majority, not all.
It says, and I'll read it again, shall require the affirmative vote of at least a majority of the whole membership of the council. How many members do we have on our council? Five, period, end of game. I do not come up here to waste my breath. I don't come up here to be charged thirteen thousand dollars for my share of work on a water system based on storytelling. We just now talked to the USDA, but we've already passed rates. We've gone to the newspaper. We put it in as being one thing. What we presented to the public is this. You need to spend the money. You can't bank the money. If you're going to bank the money, write it up to bank the money. But you've not formally contacted USDA. So saying you're collecting money to get something and move forward is not true. You need to put the horses in front of the cart and be honest. And then you need to really think, where I live is not on your twenty-year plan. If it is, show it to me. I see at least forty other homes, and I haven't gone through on a map thoroughly. Why should I be asked to pay thirteen thousand four hundred dollars, my share of nine point eight million, to not touch anything on my water when the well's a hundred and fifty feet behind my house? Why should anybody in this town have to be subjected to this when the town has not done its job and not done it for so many years? We're in bad shape. Again, we've done nothing. We haven't talked to USDA. We haven't gone to our senators or legislators. I did. They've never met any of you, ever. They met Joe Bieber's to talk about public disclosure. Okay? Well, Kirk Pearson would like you guys to get off high east, so to speak, and call him up. We could put this in capital budget. I called him the day after you voted on this. He's so hard to get a hold of. I met with him the next day in his offices in Olympia. I was given tours of the house and the legislature.
Come is done.
Okay? Well, I'd like more time, or I'd like to come up here and speak as the owner about my adventures. Or are you really going to tell the people that you don't want to hear what our senators said you do?
At this point, Steve, it's up to the council whether they want to allow you to continue.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I did the job to go down there. Go for it, okay?
That would have to be a motion, I believe.
I make a motion to allow him to continue to speak for another three minutes.
Sir.
All in.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to stay directly with what Mr. Pearson and I talked about. I spoke with Mr. Pearson. I threw his aide Cameron. Cameron, Mr. Pearson decided to bring in, I didn't bring together his name, Dan Christensen, who is the House Republican Majority Leader. So we had representatives for the House and the Senate. They want to know why we have, they haven't heard from us. They'd like to have done it as capital budget. They also gave us a dire needs fund, a ton of other information I'd really like to share. And they really want you guys down there. They're here to help. Kirk Pearson's been in office here for sixteen years. Why would Kirk Pearson invite me down there the very next day and us sit around and have a meeting about positive? We're worried about people that can't afford the bill? Well, what if the state of Washington just paid for it for us? But we're never going to find out if we don't ask. And that's not talking to the feds. I mean, we need to go to these people. We don't need to pass the, or we're telling people the wrong stuff. Let's go down there and meet with these guys. Let's put this stuff back and take a look at it and do it the right way. Let's not charge homeowners stuff we don't have to. Let's help everybody else. Now, the last part I'm going to say is I brought this information back with my wife. I walked into John's office, and I got told by John, he's found that what I said to him generally just to be lip service. We've not talked to him until after the fact. They don't know who we are, but it's lip service. We have the broken water systems. Look at all the trouble we have. We need to do things differently. Prior to going down there, my last one, I spoke with the mayor on the phone. I was asked by Cameron to discuss it with her before I went down there. Mayor quoted me. Excuse me, I'm going to quote the mayor on this. If I'm lying, I'll pay the money. You tell me where to go for a lie detector test. I run Gold Bar, you're just a purse. She made it very crystal clear, and I'm not going to speak for somebody else's extra hearsay, but somebody else told me they kind of got the same thing. Your mayor doesn't want anybody's help. Nobody wants anybody's help, but they're not doing their jobs. Okay? Imagine what we have done if I was actually allowed to actually help, or if you just listen and follow through with anything that's been said. This is not how to treat your people. And I'll guarantee you, for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for you not to touch my stuff in twenty years, good luck with that. Because everything I see in front of me is something presented as what it's not. And this says it's for one thing, the paper says it's something else. Two hundred bucks, Superior Court, the injunction goes in, and it's stupid. Because there's a better way to do it and move forward. Same thing I always say, this can be a positive, but it can't be a positive if it's not allowed to be a positive.
And before we move on, I didn't want to interrupt Steve, but we need to have a vote called on that motion. There was a motion in the second. I didn't hear the vote. Did you? So was everyone in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Any other citizens comments? Okay. First item, PUD feasibility study, discussion back to.
I, are you open for discussion, Owen? I think you should, I think council should give this a lot of thought before they, before we open up a can of worms that we can't close. We can do our own research, but once we bring PUD in here for a feasibility study, that opens up a lot of things that we don't necessarily want, want to happen right now. Gold Bar has plenty of good water. We meet the same health standards that PUD does. Our, we do have water lines that need replacing. We have fire hydrants that need painting, but these are things that we can handle in-house. So just my opinion that before we go a step further with PUD, I'd rather see the city handle our own, or have a chance to handle these problems before, before we get those things involved. So that's, that's just my opinion.
Very good.
One thing that hasn't come up is we have USDA water loan for several more years, and I don't know that the PUD would want to take that loan on. And if we went to a PUD for the water system, we'd have to find out ahead of time. If you didn't take it on, do we default on that loan? And would we have to pay it back? So there definitely would have to be some research done before we got to any stage with the PUD and what happened with that loan.
Well, the USDA lady will be here for our next council meeting. Maybe that'd be a good time for her to answer any questions that we might have.
I think so.
What is this, PUD or?
I'm postponing.
Well, right now it's just discussion. We can just let it go until you guys want to bring it back on the agenda some later date.
I don't think anybody heard you. It's, it's up to the council.
Well, I would make the motion that we put this off until after the USDA lady is here and answers any questions that we might have. Then if we still want to have a feasibility study by PUD, at least we would know a little bit more about what, what we would ask for.
Yes, against the table, which is the same.
We made a motion that, right? I have a second.
Yes, the table. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's a Department of Corrections contract rate change.
This is a yearly contract that we have with the POC, and something that we need very badly, and it's something that we let get away from us before, and we have to stand in line to get it back, so.
Right, so we have the contract in place, but a piece of that contract is their rate increase, and they have not included that in the contract that we signed in. So they want us to sign off on the changes in rates. And as you can see, the offender gratuity's gone up a little. Transportation, which is mileage, has dropped, and then they've added an additional charge of thirty-five cents for L and I. So we would just need a motion to approve the rate changes and to authorize Linda to sign the rate changes, if that's what you want to do.
I make a motion that we give the mayor authority to accept and sign this contract.
Second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Order number six ninety-two, amended twenty sixteen budget introduction, first reading.
Well, this one is pretty straightforward. As you can see from the draft in your packet, it's the purchase of the truck that the council approved last year. The purchase wasn't able to happen during the funding year, and so the council then approved to roll that expenditure over into twenty sixteen, but it was not part of the twenty sixteen budget. So we just need to amend the budget to include the purchase of a truck that you approved rolling over, if that's what you choose to do.
So is this, this is coming out of the water fund?
Yes.
What's the truck? What kind of truck?
It's work truck, pickup truck.
So question, I didn't think we could borrow from the water.
We're not, this isn't a borrow. It's a purchase of capital asset.
It just comes off the water.
The water fund pays for the purchase, yeah. Just like it pays for supplies related to the water fund.
It's water truck.
And this is the introduction and first reading, not adoption.
You make a motion that order number six ninety-two be accepted for first reading.
Second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? As a farmer's market, we have the opportunity to bring it into our city and sponsor this. We have a person, Rosalind, that will do all the footwork. We have a person, Rosalind, that will do all the footwork. But we need to recollect rent on it, but we also have to pay insurance and portability. One of the side benefits of this farmer's market is with the tourists, we have the ability to go ask for grant money to actually build a restroom facility in our property and make it a more permanent. This will help in Goldust Days and other events going forward. So, sorry. A farmer's market, we have a sponsor.
No, I understand that, but I have a question.
I'm the deaf one.
You're the deaf one, never mind. Yeah, we have a...
The old one.
The opportunity to have, to start collecting revenue on a farmer's market, we have women that volunteer and to take on the footwork and get these people, but we have the insurance and we'll be doing the portability. So this is a revenue opportunity that I'm putting forward to the council. Yes.
Comment and question. So you said she's going to be doing the footwork. One of the things we've discussed about Goldust Days is a big issue is signage, letting people know when they're coming into Gold Bar that these things are happening, that these things exist. So is she going to take care of that kind of stuff? Cool. I think it sounds very positive. It not only brings in the revenue from the rents to the city, but people who will be here will be shopping at the grocery store and having lunch and having dinner at the different establishments in town. I think it's a good positive attraction.
Say that again? No, for booth rentals, I don't think it would be any more than like Goldust Days and booth rentals. Okay.
We had a farmer's market here years ago, a long time ago, before our post office was here. I think that's the field they used, and it was noted. They, I remember what, they had a, one of them bungee jumping things at the same time.
I remember that.
But I mean, it grew lots and lots of people. They came up here like crazy, the people at their little booths that they sold things and made things and sold things and bought things. So it was really a big draw for Gold Bar. It was, I think we had it just about every Sunday. So I would be in favor of an investment to get one started again.
So the commission?
Did you, did we come up with any, how much investment we were talking about here that would cost the city to start with?
At this point, would the motion be to continue researching it and looking into it? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I'd ask the council for more time to...
Well, it would be nice if we, if we had a figure to go with, so I would make a motion that...
Would you have part of it is the, we have to go to an outside agency, and I was waiting for her call back, and she didn't call me back yet on that for the insurance. And the portability is $192 a month.
$192 a month?
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a great idea. City needs more things like this.
In order to get the positive figures on that, why don't we, I make a motion that we table this until we get some figures or until maybe next meeting we should have.
Next meeting. Okay.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have the Eastside Computer Contract, which is where they, they're...
I've been, it's all right, fine. So I've been working with Mike Myers on the contract. I told him my concerns about the flat monthly cost. He removed all of the wording that I had as concern, and he replaced it with wording that I actually approved, which was the going back to paying the hourly rate like we do now, doing the work service that we do now. So basically, it's everything that we have now, just in a contract form. So you could choose to approve it tonight, or you could choose to, if you need more time to read through it, whichever you would like to do, but it'd be appropriate for some sort of action.
So there's no change in the cost?
No change in the cost, except that there's no longer the $350 flat monthly fee.
That's a plus.
That's a big plus, yeah.
I would make a motion that we accept the Eastside Computer Contract if our court clerk is satisfied with it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have any final thoughts or comments?
I would have lots of comment on, I apologize for being absent last week. My wife is doing a lot better. She still has a ways to go, and that's the reason I feel happy that early tonight things wound up. Also, I would like to comment on Steve's information, and I think that's a good idea if anybody has the opportunity to get in touch with our senators and legislators and let them know that we're still up here in this little town. And as Steve said, nobody had ever contacted this senator for 16 years, so I personally don't go down to Olympia very long, very often, but when I do go, I will make arrangements to see some of our legislators and I think it's a good idea. That's all, my comments.
I have a comment also. Steve, I really do appreciate your work. Would you do me a huge favor? You hold up these papers and I can't see them.
I have copies.
Okay? I would really like, can you put them in some sort of a report or some sort of information that I can follow? And I want to see what you're talking about. I really do. You grabbed my attention last time when you said you like this town and you wanna see it work. I do too, that's why I'm up here. And I love Kirk Pearson. I know him, and I probably have never talked with him about the water, but we talk fairly often.
He wants to talk to you.
Yeah.
I mean, all of you, and he lives in Monroe. They're just in session now.
Oh, really?
But it just, it didn't seem to make any sense that the guy was just playing lip service. He went through too much effort. It was, I actually sent the guy a meat thing back, it was like being welcomed to a guy's home.
You were, yeah, sorry. So anyway, Steve, if you could do me that huge favor, and I'd love to see your numbers, I really would. I'm not a numbers person, but I trust that you can give me something that would make sense.
I can do that.
Okay, cool. Appreciate it.
Minutes of February 16th, 2016.
Oh, you took minutes. I was not here for the meeting, but I did read the minutes, and I would approve the minutes after. I make a motion to approve the minutes after.
Second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. You got your approval?
Okay. I move that we approve checks number 31220 through 31245 for a total of $33,931.53, of which claims are $8,862.25. Payroll is $25,069.28.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hours are approved. Is there any further citizen comments?
Chuck Lee, still three to nine, six four, McCree Road. And I just wanted to make one more comment about the PUD. I know Lisa's getting bored with my repetitive comments, but you know, the PUD has been in the newspaper a lot recently with totally screwed up bills. And to be quite frank with you, I would rather have a totally screwed up bill than a water system that's maintained on a synchro, a synchro patic manner that's by hook and by crook and with occasional grants from here and there. I really think it's time that the PUD come in.
Oh, Jesus.
Thanks.
Hey, so PUD, 301 Grand, I'm gonna echo Chuck's broken record statements about PUD. I just, this is gonna tie us to whatever fix you decide on for a really long time. So I just think it would be smart to look at all the options, and I don't, I don't see what could be bad about free, first of all. And the worst things that we can find out from them would be, A, they don't want it, or B, we can't afford it. But we would know. And so my understanding is the first phase is free, the second phase is $30,000, and they've never been turned down for a grant to pay for that. So I just honestly don't see what the harm is in having them here so that we can ask these questions and find out.
On the PUD comment, the one thing that I think everybody should actually have, every single citizen that's come up here has all said the same thing. In that first meeting with PUD, we are under no obligation to PUD at all. We've actually had, council members have actually had the same conversation. We're not under any obligation. It's when money starts changing hands, they're gonna want something. But either way, let's go a different direction. I'd like you to take me up on, I'd like you to meet with me. I'd like you to meet with Kirk Pearson. I'd like you to meet with Kirk. I'd like to invite Kirk Pearson down here. I'd love to. I'd love to have him come down here and stand in front of the people, and even if it's just lip service, I'd like to hear what he has to say. And I'd like to see Dan Christensen come with him. Because if you look at it, you have, Dan Christensen is the House Republican, he's the leader of the Republican Party. True or false?
True.
That's just the Republican side. That's not the Democratic side. That's also not our congressman. There are so many things that we have not looked at, and we really do need to fix the problem and move forward for everybody. You can't leave anybody behind. And you just can't do it the way that we're doing it. And it's really easy just to step back just a little tiny bit and let PUD come in here, let a senator come in here, and if the people are still standing here, we're talking on an average, a home, our home $140,000, we're talking 734 connections when you do the map, that's $13,400 on the 9.8 million. That doesn't fix the entire problem even then. I mean, we're talking to get up into 10% of the value of my home and not do anything, anything in front of my house, but we're talking 10% of the value of everybody's home. Why do we not get to vote? And that's actually a question that I'd like an answer from every single person on the council. Why do we not, as citizens, get a right to vote on what happens? And that could very well be just saying we don't wanna do Gold Bar anymore, because a lot of us are really unhappy with what's gone on. So we may not wanna be a city anymore, but we are the people, and our biggest voice, our single biggest voice, is our vote. And I wanna know why this can't be voted on by the people. It's a significant amount of money, and the way it's being done, we're not happy about. So move a better direction or give us the opportunity to say no, because we don't like what's being presented. It hasn't worked, and it's not gonna work, and none of us have faith in what's being done right now, working. That's why you're hearing the comments. But there's other directions to go, a lot of them.
Time.
Yep.
Anyone have a motion for a minute?
No further, I make a motion that we chair the meeting.
Do you believe that? No, you don't.
No, we...
They had the PUD call before, they made a present dish. So here's the girl, it's on the... We turned it down.
Sounds like Simon.
All righty. I'll tell you, I'll tell you...